Eji Mafah di pretty babye
Ah ha, amari char
Come and see Eji Mafah
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafah with her problem
Ah ha, amari char
Eji Mafah na flentit a bus
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Eji Mafah
Ah ha, amari char
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Veroneke Echarion
Hm? Echarion? Paul! Echomepo, where is Paul? Bring him out!
Paul! Oh, Paul is sleeping This sweet boy broke so hard last night So he's um trying to get back his energy So he's having a beautiful...
Paul! Hey! Come on, step up here, you man Bia? Paul! Paul! Will you take your useless self out of my bed And come out here? Now! Let me hand you over to this useless tissue paper See see Eh! Wababababab You have saved your purpose And have enjoyed what I want to enjoy Follow your fuso Go with your physical out of this place Oe wu Paul! Come on, no here Paul! Paul, po, po Did you do anything with her? Hey, konfobidomeleme Abomination How? I am asking you how? How is it an abomination? Abomination because he is your husband? Or abomination because you bought him and paid for him? My friend, go and sit down This one here is a complete eligible single man So therefore, he is a national dick And any girl is entitled to have a share Onye sebo si, obye kelo Onye sebo si, obye kelo Uh huh Anyway, what the... Why am I even wasting time with you two fools? Eh? Let people prepare for work Unlike some people who are habitual I do monkey Paul!
Joseph
Paul, oh, wah! Paul, you are dirty Wait, wait, wait Did you put your titty down, man? Hey! Omeleme, Paul, oh, eh Paul, lo konfobida, you serious? Hey! Paul! Paul, you sheshehehe, shame! Get out of my face! Look, me and you, we are done It's over, get that!
Honey, but it is not my fault It is not my fault
No, it's my fault! It's my fault! It's my fault Did she tie you rope? Get you run away from the house? Did she tie you? Did she put to you? Paul, man! Man! Your enemy will just turn your lover overnight Shame! Me Omeleme
I didn't even go into the pit to use the cup
Ugh!
Vero
Oh, Paul, oh, you're funny
Only... Vero
Omeleme, look at that I go swear for you Komwa, bono Komwa, bono
Eji Mafah di pretty babye
Ah ha, amari char
Come and see Eji Mafah
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafah with her problem
Ah ha, amari char
Eji Mafah na flentit a bus
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Eji Mafah
Ah ha, amari char
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafah on the move One woman and several to rush in a day If he ate her She go show you In the 21st She is ready
Fine Hey! Come here Hey! Hello? Hey! I'm talking to you Hello? Hey! Boy! Boy? These people's love is strong Hey! This is the kind of love I should be enjoying from Joseph This is it This is love right there This is love But no! No! Joseph is in London, fooling around Eh? Frolicking with different women He allowed another woman to snatch him To snatch him away from me Okay No problem Somebody snatched my own So I will snatch another person's own Oh yes! And I have the power to back it up But you I don't know who you are But you have entered my list I will hunt you down And I will get you Used and done That is my game format
Honey, I'm sorry Please forgive me Honey, please Listen now
Be begging me, oh Be begging me, please Keep begging me Na yo botu mbiko Na yo mbiko ku Isu bo ni berebe, oh Like a fool that you are Keep begging me They say you will fall into a hole And you went and suddenly fell into that hole Paul, you not be mumu Are you not a fool?
Honey, it was under duress It doesn't mean anything Just forget it I still love you I'm sorry, honey, please
Don't mean anything Hey! Don't mean anything Allow me to fool other men now Since it doesn't mean anything to you Eh, I will do my own under duress too You are very stupid, Paul Mumu!
Honey
Follow, follow To get coconut, you know they use that As to be rich, you not get sense Who is making that noise? Eh? Who is that person? Where is somebody shouting and trying to bring this compound down? Who is that fool? Eh, Bia? Vero? Did I just hear your voice? Did I just hear your voice? Come, Vero Even I say you not get sense, oh Vero, if they not go you web Or in fact, if they go you web Talk here again Shout on this sweet man again, make I hear Uh uh And you Paul Are you a man or a woman? Eh? What is in this, Vero? This same crinker, Vero, that I'm seeing here That you cannot dump her That you cannot dump her And find a better woman that will treat you well With respect to the way a man should be treated Eh? A woman that will not be shouting on top of you Or on top of your head like a mad, mad person Paul! Are you a castrated goat? Don't you have a manhood? Why do you take such rubbish from her? I'm asking you Why?
Would you please I beg you in the name of God Leave us alone and let us handle and solve our problem Alone, please
Yes Vero, did you just shout? Did you just shout? If you talk like that again, God will punish you You are mad Oh, Vero Oh, you now use our Oh, so you and this one are now our Anyway Look at you You are on your own! You are on your own You are mad I actually like the way you called me EJ Ay It is very sweet and romantic I like it It's like I will take the name now EJ And I will just drop Eji Mafah That Eji Mafah even sounds like a man's name, sir Paul Let's go inside and settle our problems
Thank you For leaving me
You are not going Sit your order You are not going anywhere Uh uh Oh! Eh, so like an animal to the slaughterhouse You follow her Not so You are mad You don't have sense Almost stupid That is what you are But I can assure you that you are not stepping an inch You are not going inside there In fact You are my boy Oh yes, you are my boy! Uh huh I have the same rights like she has Because that thing that you have been doing to her inside her house You have also done it to me inside my own house So You are my boy So that right she thinks she has Me too, I have it What do you mean by that? In fact eh We will drag you If it comes to that We will drag you Onye zotawelo Yes That is the only thing You are under arrest I will arrest you! And we arrest you! And we... Hey! Who am I seeing like this, oh? My sisters! Who am I seeing like this? Ah, my sisters, oh! Oye, oye, oh! Oye! I can't you see I can't you see Hey! Wait, okay
Wait, you flash, eh Why you two women trying to arrest you?
What is your problem? Somebody your
I wanted to arrest this one for law, but I have freed him since I have seen you before Let us go, let us go Okay So this is you Hey! Funtu, spylet Funtu Ahmo Ahmo Anu goro Go, go In the path Anu go, go Efikese
Yo, man
Yo Pizza Imu gomo, ha! Come, let us go, let us go
Thank you, Ieroba, oh, thank you The penos, oh
Odine, kwa
What is this?
Who is Ieroba?
You now? Are you not Ieroba? Roba something
Is it because you've been calling out the names she gave to us And would not be calling your own name?
Oh, even you gave me name
You are Ieroba! It is not Ieroba, eh Ogo ama and aboma Is she not Ieroba?
She is Ieroba
Is she go to Ieroba and kenada?
In ke, in ke bu, kankam
Oh, no, Vero, 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 let me ask Why is she called Ieroba?
Eh eh, why?
Because you don't have feelings now Even when a man is killing himself No feeling
Nka wa shocha Better lie You don't know me very well I have feelings, oh Deep feelings In fact eh Hey! Small touch like this Bam, my battery are stand, yeah? First time! I'm only using this grad, grad To protect my fighter heart One niggas won't rob you
Omo la, mukie Ogo be ama Biko, let's go inside
Oh, people will go inside I am very hungry I hope there is food in that house
Yo, but you ate all in the road, this side that keke Was not enough All the time you Please, I'm the last one, I'm full of zaba, yeah, biko
You're not You're not
I'm the last
You don't have respect Oh, yeah, oh, oh, I get You go, you go I get you, eh, enter
You got enter Enter, I go, I go respect here, please send me
Eh, eh, biko, biko, biko
Biko!
Hey! Eh! 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 Vero Punky So you knew they were calling me Ieroba And you didn't tell me Eh, the mile up Eh? Okay, you two You are Ieroba Ieroba
Hey, ya Hi
What are you looking at?
Beautiful family My sisters, they are very beautiful They look very nice to me You not to meet your sister Don't talk with family
Haven't I told you my sister was hit and killed by an electric pole? While standing on that The streetlight in Italy on duty
Oh, no But finish your sister is in here for a man doing that kind of job
Which kind of job?
On duty now Under the streetlight in Italy I know that kind of job
Now you sad, eh? Are you God? Are you God?
No
I don't know Maybe I heard she didn't die immediately Maybe she begged God for forgiveness before she died Yes I want us to die Let's go inside Let's go! Let's go! Are you still looking?
No! Look at what
This is the most good eh? This is the best
Ay, eh, let's go, Iya, bakia
Efikese, efikese, efika
Eh, weh Efikese, efikese Efikese, let's play Efikese, efikese
He's gone
Eh, weh
He's not bo bo, eh
No No
You're young, eh
It's bo bo
Nika, koka This food is so sweet Do you know that Amongst all of us You are the best cook Eji Mafah You is the drama In fact You are the love master Die! In eh, in eh, si In eh, si, in eh, si, go, go Just call me EJ For short Mm, mm Paul, ya, dek, omi ya, dek, mama Twomi ya, twomi ya EJ for short You're the best cook EJ for short
Because that is why we have come We came to tell you that This kind of sweet food eh Will be best appreciated by a man This No, the man, ah, this The whole We need you to get married eh This
Inditri It is not EJ for short It is EJ for short
But that was what they said
EJ only didn't more, more for short, eh She was the one that said
EJ for short You told me you are called EJ for short
They said the same
Yeah I thought you have changed, oh So it is Eh? Vero, so, 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 you are still an inditri, oh You, 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 Paul, look at, ojil, ojil I even thought that at least Your husband Would have given you small sense But it is very obvious that he took the one you came with That is why you wrote That I received a stamp for six years Six times The man had to withdraw you out of prostitution And packaged you to husband's house Jiri and my wife thought your husband would give you small sense Please! It is not EJ for short, eh It is EJ For short You may say Please
Efikese, efikese EJ and then mo, mo, please, let's get Before people go the wrong way They call me Stop making, making us laugh like idiot
At least Idiots are happy And idiots are laughing Oh, don't you know that Laughing in this age and time is a luxury
I don't know, you're right
So, oh Anyway I had the husband
Where is it? In the bathroom Husband!
It's your, it's your, look at me Even me See the way you're shouting like you market woman
I don't eh It's in the UK Is that in the UK? Okereka, okay
Ukelia
Okay, lot What can I say, ukelia, what can I say? It's a lot Okay
Londono! Londono, biko nu Londono! How did I EJ know you people?
London Okay Eh, his name is Okay He is in London
He's okay You guys should shut up What I need now is beer You can eat in beer I need to drink beer and wash this food down This thing is too sweet But beer is in the beer pail on the house Can you believe me? That is where I normally go after work And cool myself down Step, go the one down That's Put one on with Would they cool Like down, down, down
No, 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 no Your father, Mosheruni
Know that The beer that Our father used to give us Half of half cup money, the little girls It has entered all of us Do you know that A week cannot pass without me drinking beer?
Over now!
The now
Hey! Like wife, like I'm on omo I'm on omo Wait, stop Now I know all those your children No, you are omo, abro, na You're well cold, oh, na In fact eh You're saying the truth Oh, go, go, go
You're not cool You are omo Those your children, they are just drunk, eh They just drink Let me see if you want to open a brew with Everyone are omo
Shut up, oh, eh, you're omo, no See, you're saying the truth We need beer To wash this food Down But I'm You know why?
Why?
When my husband travel to Germany With his oga He told me That when they were in Germany That they used to open tap Of Hey! And when I'm omo, na, I'm omo Na, I'm omo You will see the way they will be drinking it Drinking it, drinking it, drinking it
Funtu
Why are you looking at me like this now?
Funtu
Making it You're a bad girl In the eyes Serious That's the way Eh, no
Funtu
Vero
Funtu
Oh, good eh
Funtu
Ke, ke Ke, ne, ne, si, man, you twa
Funtu eh
And what you think, eh? Gensu, misting, misting I don't know why you're laughing They, he said that that is the reason why Your skin Is very smooth Skin ha And not tough
Driver Same kind of
They call me the god of the door, eh
Funtu Here
You people do not believe me
I believe you I tell you
You're true
Come to us, go, go In the regard, she says, amo, bro Because you're You're standing on a wheel, oh
In a, in a, koka Um, listen I honestly do not support drinking beer from tap It is always good to drink in rotation And we are women We shouldn't be drunk You understand?
You tell me, oh, yes No, small, oh, na, what, oh, na, da
Eh Even the men Are they supposed to be drunk? It is better you drink A can For a glass of beer Bon As for me I drink just one glass of beer Once in three months A chokama, koka
Oh, oh, eh Kaiba, do, kene Hey! Hey!
Uh uh I'm good eh
What is your I need to first, be, be, be Ah ah Ow! Yeah Imagine, oh You're a How can you have two hands?
I'm the last born
No, that is that you have been doing since You are still doing it
I'm the last one, oh
Keep one, keep one Keep one
Nah, it's not my fault Keep one I'm the last born, eh eh You're not Eh My mommy
I say, Zorin
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 I'm telling you, what is this thing?
I'm not eating it Zorin
I'm the last born
I'm not eating it
I'm a woman
As you say You people with You with Eh Don't worry You see that place It's not proper, tell you the name, you know If you see this floor If you see this path
Ay, ay, what I Now I sing You try say the Gracias, no, thank This one Great Oya bosha Mia Oya bosha
Today, I feel today This is major step Why you don't
Over, what take you there?
This one, this three is are looking like giant, 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 giant
Funtu That one is at our, we pass time Anything that don't happen
No, no, no This one is
So I'm on omo Shut up I'm starting to Fuck them all Omo, we don't Omo, we don't Oya bosha Mia Mia, muwem One of the Omo, darling Everything As a one, I like
No, everything Is there like that Omo, ra, wo, di, kwa If you see the like Hey, you want me Have a Kolo, kolo Kolo, kolo Hey Hey Hey
Hey I am I'm telling you Eh There are no I'm not Ne, ne, some What's on the family? What's are this eh? You know this is on it like eh Mountain Or Obadi Eh, 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 eh Some You know, I don't know, we go I'm on omo Stop eating wolf I'm on omo
Dan I'm tired of messing around See eh If I find a good woman now I will marry and settle down You dey laugh me My guy The secret to that is When a man is ready to settle down And finding a good woman Who is willing to settle down And go to Bongo Join together And find settlement Join together Yes And find settlement Exactly I like that I like the sound of that
I'm on omo I'm on omo
Miss Shatip
Viaki
Oh, me, me, eh, na, eh Yes, oh Viaki This is my permanent tip If any day I come here and I see anybody on this tip I will arrest the person
I'm on omo
Drink it, drink it Hey! Wait them, wait them Wait them! They didn't know you Uh uh I say eh This is my joint Hey! This is where I come to relax after work Yes
She say, wait there, you people should come now
Oh, yeah I'm on omo, I'm on omo Hey!
This is not looking like our village back Is this Like village
Dan, no, man, dan, no, man Omo, I'm there, yeah, omo I'm expecting that the skin They perceive you, Papa was drunk
But I like this
Eh eh, that is why you like drink
Like, brother, like, daughter